Call the meeting to order. I'll ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Messer.
Here.
Commissioner Vogel.
Here.
Commissioner Normile.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to invite Commissioner Finch to invite our invitational prayer speaker up.
First of all, this gentleman is my older brother. He's also retired Baptist minister, and he's the founder of the Emerald Isle Baptist Church, and he's the owner or co-owner of the Emerald Isle Books and Toys for 34 years here at Emerald Isle. At this time, I'd like to present Dr. Charles Curtis Finch.
It's good to be here tonight. About 30 years ago, this was Emerald Isle Baptist Church. We met here on Sunday mornings. We had a corner with the piano and everything in it, and we made church on Sunday morning. And it was great for the town to let us do that, to get our church started. It's good to be here with you this evening. I have a book in my home library of prayers by Peter Marshall. Some of you may know who that was. He was one of the most famous preachers in America last century, and he was also the chaplain of the United States Senate. So I'm going to close my prayer this evening with a part of a prayer from Peter Marshall. Would you join me as we pray together? Our Father, we're so thankful this evening for all of the people who give of their time and their talents in public service. We thank you, and we ask your guidance upon those who are in governance in our country, in our state, and in this community. We ask your guidance upon this Board of Commissioners and upon all of those who serve in the community of Emerald Isle. As Peter Marshall prayed in March of 1947, Father, let me share these words this evening. Our Father in heaven, as we pray for your guidance and help, we know that you do not intend for prayer to be a substitute for work. We know that we are expected to do our part, for you have made us not puppets but persons with minds to think and wills to resolve. Make us willing to think, to think hard, clearly, and honestly, guided by your voice within us and accordance with the light you have given us. May we never fail to do the very best we can. Help us pray in the knowledge that it all depends on you, and help us then work as if it all depends on us, that together we may do that which is pleasing in your sight. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Finch. Please stand and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First order of business would be the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
All in favor, say aye. Motion is passed. Next up, we'll have our public announcements. All right. Good Friday. Our town administrative offices will be closed April 7th, 2023. Storytime and pre-K play are Mondays at the Community Center at 9:00 a.m. Police educating the public. Next meeting will be March 21st at 10:00 a.m. in the boardroom. The next Golf Cart Advisory Committee meeting will be held in the boardroom on March 21st at 5:30. Our next Coffee with a Cop will be in the boardroom on March 23rd at 9:00 a.m. Our next Planning Board meeting will be held March 27th at 6:00 p.m. Beach driving will be closed for Easter week and the shouldering weekend, so no beach driving between April 1st and April 10th. Our next Neighborhood Watch Board meeting will be held April 4th at 6:00 p.m. at the Police Department. And our next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held April 11th at 6:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. Item number seven on the agenda is our public comment. I know several people have signed up tonight for public comment during the public hearing regarding satellite merchants. There were two sheets in the back of the room tonight. One was for general public comment, and the other one was for the public hearing regarding satellite merchants. If you inadvertently signed up, because the signup sheets were a little nondescript, if you inadvertently signed up for general public comment and you wanted to speak on satellite merchants, when we call your name, if you would just let us know if you wanted to speak during the satellite merchant comment, we'll just move your name over to that other sheet. Michelle's going to help me with that, okay? I will now open the floor for public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for general public comment?
We do. The first one is Ronnie Watson.
Just a little preference. I know we've got a lot to talk about, a lot of people to hear from tonight. If you will, remember that public comment is limited to three minutes per person. When you've got about 30 seconds left, I'll just kind of hold a hand up there. We'll be respectful of everybody's time. I think everybody will be able to get their points across, and we'll be good to go. So, thank you. Mr. Watson.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak. What I want to speak to you and I want to call all of you about something that I think is very important to the town of Emerald Isle is the gymnasium. All of you have heard me talking to you about, we need, 33 years ago, I think it's about 33 years ago, that it was built. And it just needs some attention. A lot of, it needs renovation, what it needs. And it's used a lot by people here in Emerald Isle. And I hear a lot of people come to me, and they've said, you know, they really need to do something with it. And I think, you know, we always saying, well, we've got to find the money for this, money for that. But I'm kind of in your shoes. But I know what, but you know, clean it up, and you don't do it every 10 years. You do it, you do it all the time. But I would like for y'all to consider renovating the gym, because it is used. And the people talk, and they talk about why, you know, why it be done. And it comes back to you guys. They don't blame the employees, they blame us or y'all. But I'd like for you to see you do that. Other thing I'd like to talk to you about is that I wish that the Commissioners would go out and just, and you know, introduce themselves to the merchantcy on Emerald Isle. A lot of people don't know you, a lot of them do know you. But the people that don't, just go ahead and say, hey, what can we do for you? Or what do you think needs to be done in Emerald Isle? It was something we used to do back in the old days, but I know we're growing, and we're growing fast, and maybe too fast. But I still think if you go around and just introduce yourselves, what can you do? What can you do to help? I really think that it would go a long way, and it would give you a lot of credibility. But the gymnasium, I think, is very important, and I sure hope that you will consider doing something for the gym, because it is used heavily, as you very well know.
Thank you, Ronnie. Thanks, Ronnie. Next up?
Rick Capone.
Is Rick with us?
Yeah, he's here, but I'm waiting for...
All right. If you would, move Rick's name over to the public hearing signup sheet for me, please.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. It took me a minute to tell him apart myself.
Travis Burt.
Mr. Mayor, as Mr. Burt makes his way up, we want to remind you, I think the microphone was off for the last gentleman, so make sure they turn it on so they can hear us on there.
Thank you.
Is this on?
No.
Now is that a little better?
It's on right there.
Can you hear me okay?
There we go.
Just the, one of the things I saw in the, first off, that thank y'all for letting me speak, and is this a Q and A at all, or do we get that portion tonight? The reason I'm asking is there's one item that I want some clarification on.
Just to clear up, the public comment and the public hearing are both hearing from the public, so historically not a dialogue. That would typically happen in a one-all or a two-on-one situation.
Yeah, to save us all some time on the satellite merchant conversation. Where is, it says here, Planning Board agreed to add Marina Village. Where is Marina Village in the list of zoning districts? I've never heard of it before.
Marina Village. Great question. I haven't heard of it either.
It's the old ferry.
That's what I thought. I was just curious.
I'll have my presentation so we can...
Good. Thank y'all very much.
That's it. Thank you, Travis.
Good evening. Good evening. It's a pleasure to speak to the Board of Commissioners, the mayor, the town manager. I've been following along the minutes remotely, online, and I just have one comment regarding a proposal that I saw from Mr. Zap for the '23 beach season, which would be for the carry-in, carry-out proposal with referring to trash and receptacles on the beach. My concern is, I have been a resident for 11 years. I see the volume of trash and recyclables generated on a daily basis, let alone on a weekend. And my concern is, I think in the proposal that I read, you would like to take the trash containers off of the beach and put them at the end of the public access walkways. I happen to reside at a public access, and I'm concerned about the volume of trash that will now be accumulating along Ocean Avenue where the public access is located, because instead of now having one trash receptacle there, I've read that we may have two trash receptacles and a recycling receptacle. Now, based on what I've been able to see, when I'm out on the beach myself and utilizing the existing trash containers, there's no way that with our current schedule of trash pickup twice a week during along Ocean Avenue and only once a week for recyclables, that the volume can be handled with people exiting the beach and dropping their trash and recyclables on Ocean Avenue in those receptacles. So I would encourage the board to think very seriously about keeping what we currently have. It seems to work, and it's kind of a nice little service to all our guests who come to the beach, the fact that they don't have to carry out the trash that they generate. So I'm just very concerned about the aesthetics of Ocean Avenue with multiple trash cans at every beach access. So please give that some consideration, and I look forward to seeing decisions in the minutes, because it's kind of hard to find out what's going on, and I don't know who's making that final decision. Is that something the public has a say in, or is that something the Commissioners are going to decide, or is that something Public Works is going to decide? Because in Public Works' agenda for tonight, they said they are preparing cans and flags for the beach. I just don't know if those are the new trash receptacles for the end of the walkways, or if it's going back to the old system. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
I'll leave this on.
All right. Next up?
Sarah Fullwood.
Sorry, I'm looking for A.J. here. I'm sorry. I was just kind of holding a spot for him, so you'll forgive me, I hope, if I'm not quite as prepared as I should be. I'm here to talk about what will probably be the happiest thing that we talk about tonight, and that's pickleball. So just a couple weeks ago, A.J. started a club here on the island, Emerald Isle Pickleball Club. And at the first meeting, we had 40 folks show up. So we have two courts that are currently painted on the tennis courts for pickleball. It's the fastest-growing sport in the country across every age demographic. So, for example, tonight out on the courts, where I wish I was right now, where A.J. probably is, we have age ranges from 21 all the way to 75. So it is an exciting sport. It's so fun. It can be played in any environment, really, as long as you have the court marked out. It's a little breezy here sometimes, but we make do. We would like the Commissioners to consider ways to expand the number of pickleball courts available on the island. It's relatively easy to do. Swansboro has some great ideas that they've incorporated, and it can be done relatively inexpensively. We really hope that you'll consider those options, and we're happy to provide some input on that to you at any time that you'd like to hear it. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening again. Lori Ahuna, 320 Loblawi Street. Once again, I represent almost two dozen members of the Community Center who are very concerned about its current condition. I again request that the board make it a priority in this coming year's budget to get the structural and physical plant back up to an acceptable standard. If the board doesn't begin seriously working on the center now, I'm afraid it's going to end up being a tear down. Without repairing the roof first, nothing else will make a difference. We're getting rained on inside the gym every time the weather's bad. The gym floor is an eyesore, it's unsanitary, and it is unsafe in spots. The weight room has outdated and broken equipment, and we routinely do not have enough equipment to go around during our fitness classes. I am glad to see that the $28,000 from the McLean Spell Park Fund is now in the general fund, and it has been earmarked $14,000 for resurfacing the tennis courts, I think, and $14,000 for some paint in the gym. Thanks. I see there's also a new generator scheduled for the center as well. Just don't waste time and money on paint and a generator if you're not going to make sure that the building is structurally safe first. In the January budget meeting minutes, it was said that the funds raised from the St. Patrick's Festival could be used towards the center. So I'm excited to hear how much money was raised and how it will be used. My mama always said, if you watch the pennies, the dollars will take care of themselves. So I see a few small projects that I feel that the time and resources could better be used towards the community center. Number one, the water fountain project along the bike path. It looked like those were ARPA funds, that $28,000 that is now earmarked for tennis court and paint in the gym. So if ARPA funds can be used for that, then let's divert that, I think it's $6,000 for the water fountain project. Let's move that over to the community center. We need that money there. Wooden fitness equipment in the maritime forest. Please do not spend money on building equipment in the woods while we're begging for new equipment at the center. Other projects, like planting flowers along the roads and getting new Christmas decorations, they're fine and good, and I support that. But I wouldn't be doing that in my own front yard. If my roof was leaking, I'd be fixing my roof. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Lori. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Thank you, everybody. First of all, this is the cutest town in the world, and I find myself fortunate to live here. This is something a lot of people don't understand when you live here, but when you walk out and you go to see people in other towns, they're like, you live in Emerald Isle, that's so wonderful. So I'm coming to you with the things that people have said to me. I'm big on pickleball. I'm right back, I'm piggybacking all that. I play in Swansboro, and I play in New Bern. Our courts have cracks, and every time I go to play, somebody who doesn't live here and will not pay their $2 is playing on that court from New York, Arizona, California. They put in their name, and they're there, and that's fine, that's okay, because that's what we're about. And I said, then pay your $2. He said, they're not worthy. I'm telling you, quote unquote, he's from Virginia. So I'm here to ask you, not just for pickleball, because I drive by that beautiful visitor center, our beautiful bike path. This town is clean and beautiful. Town hall is gorgeous. This, this is beautiful. Then you go in our community center. It smells like sweaty feet. It's just gross. And I want, I want to approach you to, I don't know how to do this, this is your job. It may be Park and Rec's job, but you know, I don't know how to approach that. We need a capital fund done, and we need it for our beautiful Rec Center. A lot of people use it. A lot of out-of-town people use it. Our basketball court is not what we would want. We deserve better. The town's beautiful. Beautify that. We deserve it. You deserve it. These people deserve it. I'm piggybacking what these people say. I don't work out in those rooms, and I'm not, I'm not an aerobics person, but I definitely play pickleball. But I haven't played pickleball. I joined that group, by the way, and in one week, they had 134 people join the Emerald Isle Pickleball Club. If that doesn't tell you we need more pickleball, go to Swansboro. They set up the nets, and you literally play on top of each other, but they made it because they requested it. So here we are, we're making a request, we're going to ask all of you, and I appreciate your time. Think about a capital fund. The building needs it horribly, and pickleball courts needed, tennis courts needed, they're all, they're all needed. And we're, our demographics, you know, we're 60 and up. In the wintertime, that's what we're going to do, but in the summertime, I couldn't get on that court, and they were not from here. So I would appreciate if you could consider this. I don't know how you go about doing that. I don't know that. Probably Matt probably would have to do some sort of guessing. But if you look out there now, they're all out there playing. So I appreciate time. Have a great night.
All right. So that will, you said no more general public comment? Okay. Thank you. Next item up will be our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of 8B referral policy. I'd like to table that until a later date for further discussion.
All right. Motion's on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Motion carried. Item number nine would be recognition and introduction of new employees. Our new employee with the Emerald Isle Fire Department coming on was a full-time firefighter, would be Danielle Andelin. Hope I got that right. I'd like to welcome Danielle to our firefighting force. All right. Item number 10 would be satellite merchant amendments. So we'll start with an update from Michelle Eitner before we go into public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm actually going to steal the clicker from you. I too like the clicker. Correct. Going to bring up my PowerPoint real quick, but I'm not really a big fan of the microphone, I have to admit. All right. So tonight, we're looking at some amendments to ordinances regarding food trucks. You can see, this is my long list of Phase II amendments to UDO and development ordinances, which is a process we've been underway with in some capacity or another since July 2021. In the proposed changes, we've proposed to codify the business registration process as well as update the rules regarding satellite merchants, which we often just shortened to food trucks. To best understand the drafted changes, I think it's important to see what's currently permitted in Emerald Isle. This is the short two pages of current ordinances regarding itinerant merchants and satellite merchants, which were established in 2015. It specifically addresses itinerant merchants, which are push carts and ice cream trucks, and satellite merchants, which are like food trucks and produce stands. Itinerant merchants are prohibited entirely, and satellite merchants are prohibited except for in certain areas. Here are two sections of that ordinance that are enlarged, and it includes an amendment that was made last March to increase the number of those exempt properties. Satellite merchants are allowed, one property at a time, with written permission from the property owner pursuant to an annual permit that we do not currently charge for. We identify that satellite merchants are allowed on private property of an ocean fishing pier, hotel, motel, campground, RV park, including nearby or adjacent shops, rental offices, recreational facilities or amenities associated with the ownership or operation of that pier, hotel, motel, campground, or RV park, and condominium complexes, and public beach access facility having frontage on the Atlantic Ocean and visited or frequented by transient guests or travelers moving in and out periodically, or on private property fronting on the section of Islander Drive between Emerald Drive and Louise Avenue, but never on public street right of way or beach strand. So satellite merchants or food trucks are allowed in some specific areas in Emerald Isle. This is the map that shows these areas where satellite merchants are allowed. It doesn't include that small area that was added last March. The current ordinance prohibits satellite merchants except for in these places. The proposed ordinance allows them in specific places. So the proposed ordinance expands the places where they're already allowed, but sets up a procedure for annual permits and a fee and formal enforcement. In addition to formalizing the satellite merchant permitting process, the proposed amendments also formalize the business registration process that's currently in place. This is a free, one-time registration of brick-and-mortar businesses or traditional businesses in the drafted document to provide contact information, applicable zoning codes, and connect with the fire department for their annual or semi-annual inspections, depending on the use type. But back to satellite merchants, the star of tonight's show. The amendments, which are shown with red deletions and blue additions in your packet, propose to formalize the permitting procedure and operation standards. The ordinance currently authorizes the planning department with assistance from the police department with enforcement of this article. The location standards carry forward all areas that are currently exempt of the prohibition, aka allowed, as well as includes the business district and expanded areas within these mixed-use zoning districts. It carries forward that written permission from the private property owner must be provided prior to permitting, and that public streets are not allowed for operation. The most substantive change of these amendments, as I see it, is newly allowing satellite merchants in the business zoning district. Here's our zoning map that we need to be able to see to understand these areas. As you can tell, the majority of land in Emerald Isle is zoned R2, which is residential for single-family and duplexes. There is a small area of the red business district on the east end by the Dollar General. So let's zoom into the business district in the heart of town. Here we can see the full extent of the Village West, Village East, and Marina Village zoning districts, which the Marina Village is the light blue at the top, and the majority of the business district parcels except for those on the east end. This is just a visual aid to help understand the proposed area expansions. The amendments provided to the board tonight are those reviewed and recommended by the Planning Board on February 27th. Discussion at a roundtable meeting with the restaurant and bar community on February 28th, a UDO committee meeting on March 2nd, and further research has yielded the following possible additions to these amendments. Carry forward the limitation of one satellite merchant operation per property. Establish a 100-foot setback between a satellite merchant operation and the door of an existing eating establishment or another satellite merchant operation. Limit satellite merchant operations to 12-hour spans and must be removed following operation. Require documentation of a minimum million-dollar liability insurance coverage. Increase the annual permit fee to $500. Limit satellite merchant operations at bar properties to begin later in the evening to serve those patrons. Limit satellite merchant operations to peak seasonal months. These would be easily drafted into the currently proposed amendments, but as we know, adding or changing proposed language would require new review by Planning Board prior to public hearing, another public hearing and adoption. The current ordinances only require this first-listed item and otherwise allow... and otherwise allow satellite merchants to operate openly. I could simply propose to formalize the existing business registration process with no changes to satellite merchants if the board sees that no changes need to be made. This is my usual amendment procedure timeline, which shows that we've advertised for a public hearing tonight. I'll point out that I'm not requesting adoption at this meeting due to the desire to discuss those additional provisions prior to possible adoption. I welcome any questions from the board at this time.
Ladies and gentlemen, have any questions for Michelle? Thank you very much, Michelle. Uh, before we go into public hearing, uh, Mr. Vogel had requested a minute or so. She had a couple of things to say, so Jamie, you have the floor.
I do. Thank you so much, Mayor, and thanks for the time ahead of the public hearing. So it's been brought to my attention that there's some discussion in the community that there could be a potential conflict of interest as it relates to my voting on the itinerant or satellite merchant ordinance. And I've also been asked directly if I would recuse myself from a vote on the ordinance. Having run on a campaign of transparency and done this job in my seat, the same with transparency, I thought it important to disclose three things. One, when asked directly if I would recuse myself from voting on the itinerant or satellite merchant ordinance, my response was and is, I will always do the ethical thing and consult the town attorney on the right path forward. I've had two separate conversations with our town attorney on this issue. Two, my husband Calvin has partnered with Paul Musco and Bar 1957, a newly and fun, and I hope you'll visit, um, open, speakeasy, like hangout in Emerald Plantation. And three, Paul Musco is a leaseholder of another commercial space, the former El Zerape Restaurant here on Highway 58, Main address, I believe, Reed Drive. It's rumored that he would like to have food trucks in that location. But my husband and myself have no direct financial ties to that business, its location, or any food truck. So therefore, I believe I can remain objective on this issue and this vote and look forward to hearing public comments from the community, friends, and business acquaintances during the hearing. So thank you, Mayor, for the few moments.
Thank you very much. All right. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
All in favor, say aye. All right. Public hearing is now open. Uh, we'll take our first speaker when you're ready, Michelle.
Uh, Mayor, real quickly, um, we received an email this afternoon from Mr. Radaba. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
John Radaba.
Radaba, okay, from the Fish Hut Grill, um, with his suggestions and views on it, and that will be entered into the official record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to them on your baby.
Oh, absolutely. Yep. They, they welcomed their second baby today. I didn't hear whether it was a boy or a girl. I'm not sure. Another girl? Two girls in the house there. So congratulations to John and Sarah. And uh, it's like Sonny's got a little sister right, right, right there bear side now. So congratulations to the Radaba family. All right. Next up.
Randy Hanford.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Randy Hanford, owner of Snapper's Grill and Steam Bar. All of us in the restaurant industry are number crunchers. We have to be to survive. The national average, and I've left all of you a piece of paper there, state Google search states, and I knew this before, that we make a 3% to 5% margin on our goods sold. So if you do a million dollars in sales, you get to put about $30,000 to $50,000 in your pocket. I think all of the operators on the island do a little better than that, but you'd be surprised at the numbers. At the first meeting, we were told our new residence base from pre-COVID to post-COVID, by Matt, uh, has increased from 3,800 to 18,000 people. That's approximately a 400% increase in permanent residents. If that were true, our numbers would reflect that. But not one of us restaurant owners has realized any more than a 10% to 15% off-season gain. So the numbers don't add up. We were told that there are 40,000 people a week that influx EI and don't have enough places to eat. But how many complaints about the lack of food have you truly had? At 1%, that would be 400 people a week complaining, or 4,800 people for the 12 months of summer, excuse me, 12 weeks of summer. But we were told that you cannot produce a single email that they were all phone calls and conversations, your complaints, from the public. Our industry's been hit with COVID, rising labor rates, skyrocketing food prices, which you all have all witnessed at the grocery store. We're, we're in the same boat. Our menu prices can't keep up with these increases. Four years ago, I paid $178 for a 30-pound box of crab legs. Last year, I paid between $7 and $750 for that same box. We're making less now than ever before. Food trucks can sell their wares at a discount because they don't have any overhead. That's not fair for them to come in here and take the gravy off the top. I can go out on this island at any time, eat anywhere I want, get just about any kind of food, other than the 90 days of summer, which I will have to wait. People have been waiting here for 20 years. Never been a problem until very recently. So we, uh, we need all the summer money we can get to make it through to the winter. We all have to dump a ton of money back into our businesses in the winter to keep our employees. And we know how difficult that is, hiring employees nowadays. I think the city has the same problem. That summer money allows us to give raises and bonuses to all our employees. If the number of restaurant seats are really the problem, why did you allow a 140-seat restaurant to turn into another bar? And that's Paul's Place. The question's been asked, why did we close? Floyd, you asked this. Why did we close? Simply because when we unlock our doors, we lose money in the wintertime. And, uh, did you hold your hand up for 30 seconds?
Yeah.
Okay.
You finished your thought.
If you allow food trucks, I hope it does not lead to more layoffs or even more shortened hours. We all reinvest in our brick and mortars. Example, the parking lot I bought next door. I did, I did that for myself as well as the community because it looked like high-end. And you all will agree with that. I've spent, I've spent a fortune over there. So to make, for it to make, to look nice for the city, what are the food trucks going to bring to the table? They're going to pack their tax dollars up and drive across the bridge. 100% of our tax dollars stay here. So we're not asking for anything. We're just asking to be left alone, serve our customers, give back to the community. We hope you didn't put, we hope you don't put another undue burden on an already struggling industry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Randy.
Travis Burt.
Thanks again for having us this evening. My company is Caribsy, among several others, uh, down the street here on Career Drive. After the hospitality meeting that I was not able to make, all the restaurant owners got together and have formed an association that, uh, that hopefully shows the town what the impact is of, uh, of the restaurant industry here. Uh, we're, we're about $20 to $22 million a year in top-line revenue right here within the confines of Emerald Isle. We have between 350 and 400 full-time and part-time employees going into the summer months. Like, uh, Randy said, COVID crushed us. Uh, every time I write a check for my employees this time of year, I'm losing money, going, going redder and redder. Would like to have the opportunity to at least have one good season to get some of that money back coming out of post-COVID. So, uh, that's just getting on the back of all the improvements that people have made to their, uh, to their buildings. The only other thing I'd like to, there's two things. Um, I hope we're part of any conversation that comes from this, uh, that the 15-minute hospitality, uh, meeting that was had, some folks felt like it was, it was too short and too close to a season to get their point across and to really have some good conversations. I hope we're included. And, um, the other thing, uh, and I think it was Michelle may have mentioned it, I'd also like some follow-up on the, uh, the way that the enforcement's going to be done. Um, I believe I saw that it's done by the Emerald Isle Police Department, uh, through the supervision and direction of Matt. But would like to know, you know, definitively, let's spell something out as to, you know, who, when, where, who gets called, you know, at midnight if there's a few people falling down in the middle of the street. Uh, we don't want, we don't want to go into voicemail. So, um, thank you all very much for your time, and God bless.
Thank you, Travis.
Matt Holling.
Holling. I signed up by mistake, but I apologize.
Oh, okay. Bryn Schaffner.
Is it on? Thank you, guys. Um, I'm Bryn Schaffner, part-owner of Flippers in the Trading Coast, along with my mom. Um, I'd like to start off by saying I'm not against food trucks as a whole. However, I feel rushed and overwhelmed and unsupported a little bit by the town to have some of the, to have something like this that could drastically affect our industry be in the works and have not been involved until now. The fact that the restaurant industry is the second-largest revenue generator on Emerald Isle, we should have been asked and involved in this topic even before it became a plan of action. Our numbers are the ones that matter, and we actually have proof of how many people sit their butts in our seats and how many times we turn our tables, as well as our to-go orders, which is a huge part of our business even before COVID. In the hospitality meeting two weeks ago, a lot of numbers were brought to our attention, and the main one being the lack of seats for customers to sit in in the limited restaurants we have on this island. 1,330 seats is the number that the town pulled from the internet. They told us that, they told us that they projected that we probably turn our tables an average of three times during service. How would they know that? How would you know that if we weren't asked? Both of those numbers are inaccurate. This concern of theirs brought to light a question for us, which my uncle Randy already, um, brought that to your attention. Why would you allow in a potential 100 to 150-seat restaurant in a prime spot on the island turn into a bar? I'm good with bars. I support them. I respect the bar owners.
It's not turned into a bar. It's going to be a restaurant.
Okay. So, um, receives over, okay, uh, good with bars. I support them. I respect the bar owners. But if the town, which is our concern, the town people, not the bar owners, receive over 4,000 complaints in the busy season, which is the number that they also told us in the meeting about how people can't find a place to eat, then why would you turn the second, possibly third-largest restaurant into a bar and push for food trucks? My objective, my objective for speaking tonight is to ask this, pump the brakes, do your due diligence, and involve the industry's people that this new ordinance will directly affect, and let us be involved in the conversation before rushing this decision. Right now, as restaurateurs are, we're gearing up for the summer and trying to prepare for a great season while also trying to make back the money that we lose in the off-season, whether we close or we stay open to provide a service for our wonderful customers. And something like this new ordinance deserves more time, more common ground, and real numbers and the industry's people involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryn. Thanks, Bryn.
Josh Sawyer.
I'm Josh Sawyer, owner of the Village Market. The main thing I want to hit on is the numbers we were thrown out at the meeting. I think the meeting that we had at the Islander, a lot of us felt like we were blindsided. Um, we weren't prepared for that meeting. I actually stepped into that meeting thinking it was me talking to you guys about how we could work together and literally cover every aspect of our, our industry. Instead, it was a bunch of numbers thrown at us that created a problem. And the only problem, the only thing that was going to solve that problem was food trucks. And I'd like to talk about the number 40,000 people. It was presented 40,000 people a day. We all know Emerald Isle flips once a week, so we might as well say 40,000 people a week. It's 40,000 people a day on the island. They're the same 40,000 people. So how do we know where those people are eating, when they're eating? How, how do we not know that out of that 40,000 people, 10,000 people are cooking in five nights a week, three nights a week, two nights a week? Versus going out to eat breakfast, lunch, and dinner. So I don't think those numbers matter. I think the numbers that matter are our numbers. And when you're writing a new UDO that is going to affect your second-largest industry next to real estate, I think we should be part of the conversation. And I don't think we were. We were throwing numbers that really didn't make any sense to us, and those were the problems. For the most part, I think, I have no problem with food trucks. Think they're great. But I'd also like to be part of the conversation when I know they're going to affect my industry. And I don't think we've been part of the conversation. So my proposal is, sit down and talk about it. How can a town manager, a town planner, and a board that have never worked in our industry, you don't know how our industry works, you don't know what we go through in the winter, because you haven't taken your due diligence and asked. And that's all we're asking. We want to be part of the conversation. If it's supposed to be good for everybody, we should all talk about it. And we've been left out. It was just thrown on us. None of you guys know how our business works. It's a very, very hard business. If you look at statistics, restaurants are the most likely business to fail. And for, to just come up with numbers off of bridge traffic, it's not fair to us. We're just asking to be fair and be part of the conversation. So I asked that we rewrite the UDO. We have a, Travis had a great idea. All of us get together and form a committee for restaurants. We like restaurant owners to be on that committee. We like food truck owners to be on that committee. That's the only way to make it fair. And let us sit down with the town planner and go over what's best for all of us. That's all I'm asking. Let us be a part of the conversation. Thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Josh.
Rick Capone.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm probably one of the newest members here. Uh, I've been living on the island for 19 months. I own and operate Capone's A Taste of Philly. I am a one-man operation. I could tell you I'm not taking anything from any of the restaurants. I have fun. I add a service to your customers, your vacationers. And the only word I really have to say, it's a choice that they have. Mom, dad, with three kids. They go to a restaurant one night. They're on budget. They could stop at a food truck, get a meatball sandwich, get baked ziti, stuffed shells. There's nobody down here doing Philly cheesesteaks, original Philly cheesesteak. So I look at it very personally. I do not want 100 or 30 food trucks on the island. I live here too. I think it should be controlled. I think there could be more spots, locations, 77 degrees, for example. So there's people that are drinking for two, three hours, have something in their bellies. It's another option. I understand the restaurant industry, been in it. I'm an educator. I understand the numbers. Numbers aren't always perfect. It's the day-to-day hard work. I know what these guys do. I worked at Vin Rouge in Durham. I worked at Carolina Cheese in Wilson. I am from the Philadelphia area. I didn't work at any restaurants up there. Hard work, employees, overhead. I don't have any of that. Randy was right. I've never met Randy, but he's right. I pull in with my food cart. I'm usually down by the go-karts, taking care of the travel park. I go to the pubs in the evening. So I do have a service to the community. I pay taxes. I live here. And again, I'll say it's a choice for your customer base, which is your vacationers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick.
Elizabeth Shepherd.
Do you want me to use the microphone?
If you would, please, for the, for the people online that can't hear you without.
Okay. Um, my name's Elizabeth Shepherd. I am one of the owners and operators of Shepherd Barbecue on the island. Like everyone else has said, I feel like this has just been thrown at us. This is a 90-day inconvenience for our guests that visit the island. I don't think you go to any tourist area, um, pretty much any large city either, and just walk into any restaurant. You're going to have to wait. Um, I think people are used to that. I don't think that that's really the big issue. What I do think an issue is, is when you have these brick and mortars that are used to, some of us close, some of us restrict our hours in the off-season, which is something we chose to do. And then you throw a new variable in, like food trucks. we chose to do, and then you throw a new variable in, like food trucks. We had consistently stayed open Fridays and Saturdays through the offseason instead of closing completely. In doing so, we have very accurate numbers of what our offseason Saturdays look like. This past Saturday, when the St. Patrick's Day Festival was on the island, everybody said, "Get prepared. The island's going to be packed. You're going to need tons of food, tons of employees." And we were staffed and ready and packed with as much food as we could possibly prepare because our restaurant requires a 16, 18-hour pre-cook prior to opening. So when our restaurant doors open, we have a certain amount of food to sell, and when it's gone, it's gone. So we didn't want to be short. We had thousands and thousands of extra people coming on this island. And guess what happened? 44% decrease in our sales this Saturday when there was 20-plus food trucks in one centralized location. Now, I'm a previous food truck owner. I have no problem with food trucks. My problem is, how many do we allow? And how many do we allow in the same location? I would love to see some sort of restriction on how many trucks. One truck per two, three-block radius, only at bars. You know, in addition, just what are they bringing to our town as far as service? Yes. Tax dollars? No. So the fee. I think we should have a set fee for them to initially register, to pay for the expense of the fire department, making sure they have all their permits correctly. The town would need that. But also a daily service pass. And if the passes are not there, if they're not registered trucks, I do think there should be a heavy penalty to keep them from breaking the rules and just going wherever they want. Because right now, if a truck's somewhere they're not supposed to be, we just ignore it, and that's not okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
Brandon Shepherd. Chris Johns.
So obviously, I'm Chris Johns. And I guess I'm the old guy here. Paulie and I moved to Emerald Isle in 1988, or 1987, excuse me. We opened up Rucker Johns in 1988. We did church in this building. Kurt, it was kind of wild to see that tonight. We have been here, gosh, we just celebrated 35 years. We've seen this island change tremendously. The island has grown, and we've grown with the island, and it's been fantastic. I feel like a lot of the success of the growth of the island has come from strong leadership that we've had throughout the years, Ronnie, and continued on. And probably one of the key elements of that, that I feel like, was that the town board was always really closely aligned with the small-business owners. Back in the early days, there weren't many, and as time has come on, there's been more and more. But we always did things, and we were always on the same page, and we talked about things, and we knew how things should go. I am not an anti-food truck guy. I will agree that I think the current ordinance for satellite merchants should probably be reviewed a little bit. I think the jump from what the current one that we have now to the proposal was a big leap. I felt like it left some gaps. But I think tonight, there were some new proposals and some additions that were brought up that I think that would help those things out quite a bit. Me, as a business owner and as a person that here on Emerald Isle wants to see the island preserved, is what Emerald Isle is, is that small town, that family beach. I think that's really important. I think some of those aspects have been left to the side a little bit. So what I think would be fantastic is to take some of the proposals. I know you guys want to keep rolling, but sometimes we have to take a step back and bring in some folks. And I think it would be awesome to bring in a committee from food truck owners, restaurants owners, and bring them in and sit down and work through these processes to come out what's the best thing for Emerald Isle and our guests. So appreciate the time tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Julian Johns.
Hello. Thank you, guys, for your time tonight. Julian Johns, dishwasher at Rucker Johns Restaurant. That's my dad over there. So for the sake of everyone's time here tonight, and not to belabor a point, just a couple key pieces that I wanted to touch on briefly. Obviously, we've had a lot of restaurant owners, operators stand up here tonight and voice their frustration, their concerns, and I want to make sure that everyone understands kind of where that frustration and that concern is coming from. And it's not, again, it's not this mighty fear of food trucks coming in and just taking over this island. I think what it was, was to touch on what Chris said, it was to understand that maybe we need to evaluate how things are currently set up from an ordinance perspective with satellite merchants on the island now, but to make the leap, to make the jump to where we got. To us, as restaurant owners, operators, it felt kind of lazy. It almost felt like the ramifications and the implications of introducing these new businesses and putting these new satellite merchants on this island wasn't considered and wasn't thought about. So if our interest and our goal is taking care of the people that we have coming down here and enjoying this island, let's put some thought, let's put some energy, let's put some effort into what can we do strategically to make this successful and continue to make Emerald Isle a wonderful place. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Kaitlyn Johns.
So I'm not married to either of them, despite most rumors. That's my dad and my brother. I'm Kaitlyn. I work in our family business, and I have always thought the term "restaurant owner" is so strange because I feel so strongly that restaurants are owned by the community. And my dad and my brother both specifically asked me to not mention this. And this is like my one rebellious act ever, pretty much, as a firstborn. But when we remodeled a few years ago, we saw how much ownership the public took in our restaurant because you would have thought we had gone into someone's living room and rearranged their furniture. So there was a little bit of a backlash. I think most people have warmed up to it. But we feel so strongly about creating a space that's a shared space. And we do what we do, and we love what we do, and we're not going to stop. And we've faced a lot of challenges. I think most of those have been voiced by our fellow restaurant owners. But I think it's just important that the town consider that this is a delicate ecosystem. This isn't Raleigh. Our numbers fluctuate in ways that a lot of communities couldn't even fathom. So what we do, it's kind of a game that we've figured out how to play, and I think a lot of us do it really well. We've done it a little bit longer, but throughout the course of the last few weeks, we have created such strong relationships with so many fellow restaurant owners on the island. And it's important for us to see them succeed, too. No one's too big to fail. We know that. And I just hope that the commissioners will take some of these things into consideration because I feel like it's a valuable part of what makes Emerald Isle special. It's not just feeding people. If that were the case, we could pop up another Publix by the Dollar General, and we'd still all wait in line forever. But Barb and all of our favorite cashiers would have a smile on their face. I think what's important to remember is that we're creating spaces, we're creating memories, and that's valuable, and we want to preserve that. So figuring out a way that we can do that that's respectful, that balances everything we're trying to preserve. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Michael Russell.
How are y'all this evening? My name is Mike Russell. I currently work for the Hanfords. I am the operator for Snappers Restaurants, both Morehead and Emerald Isle. What I came to talk to you all about today is about that 40,000 number. I want to talk to you about how many we actually served. Last year, Snappers Emerald Isle served over 66,066 folks in the course of the summer season. That's during our little 100 Days of Hell window there. That works out to be about 500 people a day. At no point in time did Snappers ever shut down and turn anyone away. We served everyone each and every day, all the way till they stopped coming. What I want you to consider is the impact that this will make on the employees. You've got employees that work and they give everything they've got all day long, most of them working 12- to 14-hour days, single moms, small-income families. That's what they're doing. And they know that when the winter comes, that their income is going to be cut, not cut in half, but cut to a third. How many of you guys are able to cut your income to a third right now and survive? That's what they plan on all summer long when that money comes in. The difference between the two restaurants, between Morehead City and Emerald Isle, is night and day. It's like Venus and Mars. You have this restaurant here that shuts down, it goes dark. We go from 500 people a day during the summer to 30 a night. We have restaurant owners here that take literally 3/4 to 1/2 of their income that they make all summer long and give that back into the restaurant just so these employees have a job, just so these employees can continue to work, so they have something to hold on to the next year. How many of you guys can give back half of your income? So think about your decisions that you make. You're not making decisions just based on food trucks. You're making decisions based upon employees and what you're doing to families and what that would be in order for them to have their money. When you take these food trucks and they take the cream off the crop, off the top of it, and it cuts that income back a little bit, it affects everyone all the way down to the dishwasher. Just think about your decisions and what you're able to do.
Thanks, sir. No others? Is that it? Yes, sir.
I've never been to one of these things before.
Use the microphone.
Yes, sir. I know everyone here, though.
Get your name, please, sir.
It's a family reunion of two families, maybe three families.
Your name, please, sir.
Jordan Watson.
Thank you.
Yeah, I run the Garden of Eden Food Truck. My commissary's in Carteret County, so I'd like to consider myself part of this area. I grew up in this area. I love what I do. It's not easy, either, driving a truck from destination to destination. Food trucks coming in from other areas, I hate it. If we could localize local trucks in Emerald Isle, maybe a certain amount separated properly, I like all that here and all that. It's great to hear from the restaurant owners because I learned a lot from you guys, and I have a lot of respect for you guys. Never want to step on your toes. I'd have came to your door, Mr. Randy. I was going, I was going to sit down, but I knew we'd go to blows. So I said, "I ain't going to do that." But I think we all have the same idea. I think these meetings are short and brief, and no one gets to, like, mediation would be great if we could get the restaurant owners, food truck owners. There's more of them than us, but even especially the local ones. Because what I hate the most is when I go and set up somewhere and I'm trying to gain a good following, and then another truck who's popular will come in from a different area, and they'll take business that I've been building. So I can, I feel that pain. But, I mean, the only thing I do in life is work on my food truck. That's all I do. I've got kids, I've got a family to feed. And it'd be really great if we could designate, I know Paul's name's been thrown out a lot, but he's working on things where food trucks could be in place where maybe they wouldn't affect other businesses. I think with the food trucks might, new restaurants could come in. Look at Fish Hut. I think Fish Hut's a great example. They're busy, they have a line, they've got creative food. Food trucks could be that creative aspect, and people come to the beach for seafood. So as much of the numbers that we talk about and all the crunching of the numbers and worrying, we've been through three hard, hard years through COVID, and I think I'd be scared, too, if I owned a restaurant. So I don't blame you guys, but I'd love to have a chance to serve my food on Emerald Isle in designated locations and just maybe make it not so hard because there's other trucks that want to do this, too. So if there could be maybe two or three spots, maybe one spot could have three trucks. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jordan. Any other? All right. All right, if there are no other comments, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
All in favor, say aye. Motion is carried. Any discussion from the board regarding satellite merchants only?
Mayor, just for a second there. I kind of liked, first off, thank everybody for coming out. It's funny how with this area that we live in, how we're all friends and family and everything else, and we still get along and try to work through our differences, but it does my heart good to watch how it plays out and how things happen, and we're all still friends in the long scheme of things, and just trying to do the best for Emerald Isle and make it good. I did like what Travis and Josh were talking about, about a committee based on food truck people along with restaurant people. Yeah, food truck people, restaurant people. I think that was a brilliant idea. It's your industry, and we're just trying to figure out what's the best for Emerald Isle. But that might be something that, as a board and as a town, that we might should look into a little bit more into as far as the committee's concerned, and if we decide where this next step goes up here. But I am intrigued with that thought, as that group could work together and maybe come up with some rules and regulations that would fit both sides of the table. I think that's a great idea.
Thanks, sir. All right, this time I'll ask for any final comments from our town clerk. Our town attorney. Mr. Zapp.
Yes, sir. Just want to say thank you to everyone that's here tonight. We wanted to give a brief recap of the success of the long-awaited St. Patrick's Day Festival, so thank you for those that attended. We were able to track the number of vehicles that were coming and going this weekend. So between Thursday and Sunday, an additional 37,000 cars moved through that Coast Guard 58 intersection. So we had a pretty strong Saturday, and we want to thank all of our sponsors from this room that were a part and parcel to that. We hope that, and I'm sorry to hear Elizabeth's report, but we hope that others that did have great success this weekend had a good, positive St. Pat's festival. So it was safe. Thank you to the EIPD, the Business Association, all the sponsors, all the volunteers that helped us pull off this festival that had been delayed over the last three years, due in part twice to COVID and once also to poor weather in 2022. So thank you to all of our team members and everyone that came out to support it.
Thanks, sir. All right, any final, well, ask for final comments from the board commissioners. Mark, anything else to add?
No, just thanks for coming out. Thanks for speaking your voice. Congratulations to the St. Patrick's Day. I think you did a great job down there on the Business Association and everything that goes on. It was probably one of the largest crowds I've ever seen here, and it was, hopefully, it benefited a lot of people here on Emerald Isle. So once again, I can't thank you enough for coming out and speaking your mind, and like seeing a large group here. Hope you'll come to the next meeting, too, and come out and talk it up again. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Finch.
What Mark said, but, you know, thank you, guys, for coming out this evening, and more importantly, thank you for your service throughout the years, each and every one of you. You've done a wonderful job, and our job now is what we've done tonight, and that's listen to your concerns, and we will move forward working together. So thank you, guys.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Masser.
Yeah, same thing Mark and Snead said. We appreciate you coming out. Your comments are well-taken, and just thank you for the service that you do give to town.
Thank you. Commissioner Vogel.
I will mirror those sentiments I've eaten in over the stall of your establishments over the years, and appreciate you coming out. And I think even though these conversations are hard, as Mark alluded to, sometimes, the input is extremely important in how we move forward. So greatly appreciate everyone's comments and your time and preparation to be here tonight. And on the St. Patrick's Day Festival, it's a big festival to put on every year. It literally takes town staff an entire year of planning and preparation, and then... It literally takes town staff an entire year of planning and preparation, and then comes the execution piece. After three years, we got some great feedback, may have been a little rusty on some things, but I think the event went off without a hitch, and I'm going to give you some early approximations of some of the money that we raised. We're still working on final numbers. The beer tent, which the Emerald Isle Business Association sponsors, raised $40,000 gross. And that money, Lori, thank you for your comments and, and that reminder, that money will be back in the community in a couple of different ways, which we'll announce at a later date. We raffled off the golf cart, larger than last year, over $20,000 raised for the golf cart raffle. So those efforts and those things that we do and that we put on will directly affect some improvements in the town. And I'm just so proud of all of our volunteers, like I said, town staff, and most importantly, our sponsors who hung in with us. Many of you in this room tonight let your sponsorships roll over year after year, and you hung in with us, as did our vendors, and they didn't have to do that. A lot of those vendors didn't have to return, and they did because they believed in our event. So it was a success, and look forward to getting back to planning next year like yesterday. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner?
Norma? Yep, thanks for coming out. Obviously, more work to do, and I don't think anybody's in a rush to rubber stamp a document, so we'll work together, we'll get it all done. The only complaint I've got on St. Patrick's Day, I'm glad Red's still here, so Red and Ashley fix all this food for the VIP tent, and then Candace dispatches me on this four-and-a-half-hour work project during the festival, I come back, and what's left to eat? Red, they didn't save me anything, brother. I'm going to come see you, and we'll get together. I know you'll feed me.
I ate enough for you. Red, that was, that was delicious. Really good.
Yeah. As would be custom at the conclusion of our monthly meetings, if you haven't been here before, I like to go through the stats that's at the end, very end of the packet that's emailed out and on display on the town website, and look at numbers and stats, and it's really a very brief opportunity to thank those that work with the town and for the town. So very briefly, Mayor, looking at the department head reports for the end of the month from Public Works, I don't think Joe is with us tonight. He's usually here. Joe's not here. Just a quick shout-out to Joe and his crew. They finally got, it was on the goals list, finally got the ponds flowing out at Cape Emerald, and the ponds regulated and back to normal. So just a shout-out to them and for fixing the drainage out at Third Street. Noticed in the monthly police department stats, really, it's a shout-out, Tom is here, Mr. Tom Rule, a great guy. He and the Neighborhood Watch, and of course, they work hand-in-hand with the police department. Finally got enough data in for one year full of stats, full 12 months in a row. And so the burglaries are down 44%. Thank you, Mr. Tom and Chief. And larceny's down 24%. I hate a thief. Dag on, I hate a thief. And one day, maybe, we'll be crime-free. We are really close. You all do a great job. Wanted to thank you for that. And then lastly, noticed in the planning department, one, two, three, four, five, five, five properties at a 7,000, just under 7,000. You know, sometimes our folks knowingly or unknowingly may cut some trees, or do some of this, or do some of that, sometimes knowingly, sometimes unknowingly. And I know Michelle and Jeff, looking at your report, you work hard to get that straightened out and work with the people to make those corrections. So I'll just close on a happy note. That's five incidents over a period of a few months. We've got about 7,000 units on the island, so to those 99% of people who do a great job and follow all the rules, and don't cut the trees, and follow the speed limit and everything else, we'll give them a big shout-out tonight and say thank you. How about that?
Thanks, sir. I'll be brief. Hats off again to the St. Patrick's, Emerald Isle Festival sponsors, volunteers, organizers. I know I was excited to be able to get back out there and enjoy that, so great job there. I appreciate all the work, town staff, the board, and you all have put into this proposed amendment, regardless of which way it goes, I've enjoyed engaging with you all, phone calls, texts, emails, in-person conversations. You know, the old saying, I learn something new every day, is, is an understatement, and I learn more in the 30 days leading up to a town meeting than I learn in the town meeting. Public hearings are great, public comments are great, discussion amongst us is great, but I learn the most when I'm engaging with all of you, regardless of which side of which fence you sit on. So I encourage you to continue to engage with me, engage with your board members, and hope that everybody will do the same. And thank you all for being here tonight. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.